We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and our blessings. Give us strength, courage, and clear vision as we use our gifts to serve you. We pray that you oversee the safety of our village employees and volunteers as they do their jobs. Bless our residents with safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and a great quality of life. We thank you for those people who are invested in the well-being of our community. We pray for protection of our military personnel and their families, especially those that were injured and lost their lives. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Hedley.
Here.
Jones.
Okay. May we have the approval of the August 21 regular council meeting minutes that are in your packet?
I have a question for you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
In your report where we talked about the deal on water up to Haver Drive, and it says it was not put up for a vote before council, doesn't it have to have a vote?
Hmm. What paragraph is this?
Next to the last.
Which part of it was? I'm sorry.
The decision to give the water.
About the discounts or whatever.
I don't care.
That was a committee, that was a committee decision. I mean, I guess look at it in terms of, I'm thinking if people have a particular issue, like they had a leak or something and it didn't get detected and they want relief from their water sewer bill or whatever, they go to the committee and I think in the past the committee has granted all of those. So I'd say it's a similar, probably be a similar deal.
Just wanted to make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we're doing things right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, second.
Roll call, please. Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker. Yep. You have the approved bills list in your packet. If there are any questions. Yes, sir.
For industrial fluid management, where it says sewer EPA service, is that what used to say, testing, or is this something different? This one?
Yeah, normally, yes. This one I gave Cheryl the wrong PO. I called her about it today. That wasn't for lab testing, which is the EPA service. We had to have them come up to take a look at Trident Lift Station back about the middle of August. So I assigned the wrong PO for her to pay, but she was going to correct me.
And for underground utilities, sewer flow metering, I understand that we've been doing that for years. What's the additional water metering?
Oh, well, it's still the storm water. That one should be coming off hopefully by next month. Part of the one. The water additional is that extra metering to EPA, one of those to do, but then for us later, part of it can come out.
One last one on underground utilities, again, where it's a clear view for $4,059. Was that an add-on or an extra or something?
We finished our loan out and that was the balance of that one payment, so we had to pay it.
So it wasn't, it was just continuing to pay the thing forward?
Right.
Okay. I have no further questions, and unless somebody else does that move, we approve.
I got a quick question. The Rumpel class, is that for his level three? All right.
Yeah. They sent his books today and they sent the wrong ones, so he's got to send them there. He's doing it correspondence versus the classroom.
I heard Austin's doing well on his testing, too.
Let's see where he took the test. Did he pass?
It's coming up October 18.
Oh, he did pay the head, okay. All right. Well, my motion still stands.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, we have Jamie Gurkin from the Defiance County Health Department. And you're just going to update council on...
Thanks for doing it.
What's going on?
Sure. I'm Jamie Gurkin. I am newly appointed as a health director for Defiance County Public Health. I'm a public health department. This is Jen Castertano. She is the health promotion coordinator for us. We're going to tag team a presentation today about our community health assessment and our community health improvement plan, which will be coming up this spring.
Yes. Oh, great. Okay.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come here today. Jamie said my name's Jen Castertano, and I just want to give you guys kind of an idea of the overview of what we're doing right now.
If I may interrupt you a minute. You guys, I have sent you reports from the Defiance Health, Defiance County Health Department, Power Defiance, that are very lengthy and talk about our goals and stuff. Just so, I'm just telling them so that they're aware, they can picture that in their mind while you're talking about what you're talking about.
Yeah. So, yeah, we do send a lot of, the last email, I think I sent Hedley like nine attachments, so we send a lot. So right now, we're doing, we're in the process of going through our community health assessment. So every three years, Defiance County Public Health, the Health Department, hospitals, we get together and we do a survey. And we do this so we have data. So it's really important for public health that we are community-led. So we're data-driven and we're community-led. So we have a community organization, Power Defiance, that brings everyone together. We survey, we collect data to see what's going on. So that's our assessment. And the second part is our community health improvement plan. And the community, the health improvement plan, it's our action. It has our action steps, we have goals, and that's what we do to address the problems that we see in the community. And the other part is, we want to make sure things are evidence-based. So community-led, data-driven, and evidence-based. We want to see what's going on, or it's already in existence, and then we want to see what the gaps are so we can fill the gaps. So next, I just wanted to do a little interactive questions here. So what percent of Defiance County's 6th to 12th grade youth had used marijuana at least once in the past year? Anybody?
Huge.
15%. 15%.
15, 6th to 12th grade.
6th to 12th, 20.
20.
Has not?
Has.
No, I'm saying, are you saying has not?
Has, yeah.
I actually admitted it, too.
It's 9%. So we want to know. So 9%, and we want to track these things because with laws changing, we want to look to see, you know, five years ago, are we seeing a change 10 years from now? So, and that, we use those things, we have the Drug Free Coalition and the Drug Free Leadership Council, and those are programs that are kind of, they came from the community health assessment and the health improvement plan. So what percent, or in 2015, what percent of Defiance County youth admitted to texting and driving within the past month?
80.
90.
50.
They admit, they ain't going to admit it.
43%. That was 2015. So now, again, we're getting ready to do it again and we're wondering.
Yeah. And from this kind of data, we have the Safe Communities Coalition.
So that's another group of, it's an organization with law enforcement, and we work together to kind of do safety messaging. All right. What percent of Defiance County adults reported that their household was well-prepared to handle a large-scale disaster or emergency?
1%.
11%. Yeah. So, and I don't know if you've seen the videos, but the LEPC has put together some pretty cool disaster preparedness videos, and that's just another thing that's come out of the Community Health Improvement Plan. So as you can see, it's nice to not guess. So instead of saying, oh, like I've heard a lot that, you know, everyone, all kids are smoking pot, you know, we can look and say that, you know, the numbers say this. And it gives us the ability to do, or to get more funding through grants and other things because we can say we have the numbers, we know what's going on. So the chip is all about collaboration and taking inventory and seeing what's going on there. Let me think. So our last chip, Community Health Improvement Plan, we had priority areas, and it was to decrease obesity, increase mental health services, decrease substance abuse, and increase injury prevention. I almost read that wrong. Increase injuries, no, we want increased injury prevention. So those are the priorities, and from there, we create objectives and action steps. And that Power Defiance Group that meets quarterly, we also, we collect data between, we have an epidemiologist that works for the Health Department, and she produces reports. We look at Narcan, naloxone, and food security. So in Hicksville, a grocery store closed recently, and it came to our attention, so we had our epidemiologist put together a report and look at what's going on. And I believe we all had a meeting to discuss some options, and so it's a fluid document, and depending on what's going on in the county, that's what we're talking about. So with that, I'll throw it to Jamie. So yeah, like Jen said, that's one thing that we wanted to do and we wanted to expand within our agency, is that this is what the document that is our health assessment that we do, this is the document that comes out, so it's 190-some pages, 66 pages of data. And we ask all sorts of questions, from what is your insurance status? Do you have insurance? What are your health behaviors? What are your health habits? Do you go to the doctor? Where do you go to the doctor? All sorts of things. And we'll talk a little bit more, too, on how people are surveyed, which can address whether you think, whether students may be answering honestly or not, because we try to, try to do it so that they are answering honestly. So I have some of these that you can pass around and flip through if you want. And then this is our Community Health Improvement Plan. So this is the data that we get, and then we look at that data and come up with priority areas, like Jen had said. And this is our action steps. This is what we're going to do for the next three years. So this was from 2016 through 2018. But like I said, we look at data in between. So if we see something pop up, whether it be, some of the things we're monitoring right now are substance use overdoses, we're looking at falls, especially in the senior population. And then we're also just monitoring trends in general. So if we see something pop up, like all of a sudden, we don't have any grocery stores in Hicksville, and is there a food insecurity issue? That way, we can bring people together to address those issues as they come up. So I'll pass these around, too, and you can flip through them as well. So the next slide, past food security, is all of the partners we have for Power Defiance County. So you can see, it really does encompass quite a few different agencies and partners. We used to be known as Live Smart Defiance, Live Smart Defiance County Health Partners. That was our name before. And it was very long, but it also, I didn't feel, we didn't feel as a coalition represent who we are, because we look at just more the physical health, we look at mental health, we look at all the things that can go into determining your health. So if you don't have a roof over your head, if you don't have access to food, then it's not going to be, you have to address that to optimize overall health. So power actually stands for something. It stands for promoting overall wellness and empowering residents. So the next slide talks about the MAP process. That's the process we use for our health assessment and health improvement plan. So first thing is bring everybody together. We do that really well in Defiance County. We have all three hospitals in Defiance County at the table. We have representations from all throughout the county. So we have residents from Hicksville, we have residents from Defiance, all over, that all come together. We have a visioning of what we want to see in Defiance County, and that is that promoting overall wellness and empowering residents. Then we go through and we do the health assessment first, as Jen said. Just some details on that, that is done every three years. Hospitals, nonprofit hospitals have a mandate through the Affordable Care Act that they have to do this every three years. As the Public Health Department, we have to do it every five years, so that is a bit different. But because the hospitals are mandated, we want to work together, we do it every three years. We do three surveys, starting with our last health assessment. We survey adults and that, and youth, 6th through 12th grade, and then we also survey children. We did that for the first time in 2015, so now we have data from birth through adult, which was really important, because a lot of the grants we were going for were looking at what we needed for our children, we didn't have the data to look at. So for the adult data, that is done, the survey is done through a mailing. It is mailed through Census Track. We contract with an organization called Hospital Council of Northwest Ohio. They're out of Toledo, and they do all the surveying, which is really, really helpful because they grab the census stuff, they send out all the surveys, they send out all the letters. They send out this survey to the adults in the winter. The children is also mailed survey, so again, by Census Track, we look at what houses have children in it, and we send that survey through the mail as well. For the youth, we do go into the schools. So what Hospital Council does is they meet with the superintendents from all five county schools and determine when the best time to go into the school is, because we really want to be cognizant of testing and schedules that the school have. And then there's random selected classes. The parent does get a letter prior to the survey so that they can opt out if they want to. What we do, and then the schools also have the ability to opt out of questions. So with the youth survey, there is questions regarding sexual health, and there's also questions regarding drugs. So if a school feels like they don't want to ask those questions, then they do have that right to opt out of those questions. So when the Hospital Council goes into the schools, what they do is those personnel from Hospital Council is in the classroom, they give out the surveys, and they let them know that it is anonymous, there's no identifying factors on their survey. They ask them to fill it out honestly. So they fill it out, and the surveyor has a manila envelope, and as soon as they bring the survey in, they put it right in the manila envelope, so nobody's looking at it, so that they can hopefully feel confident, secure to answer it honestly, and that nobody's going to be able to know what they answered. So that pretty much outlines the health needs assessment. Like I said, the surveying will start this winter and spring, and then the University of Toledo takes all of that data and creates that 167-page report. We usually have that back in August, and then we release that information to the community. So we hold an event going through all of that data. And that's really our call to action, where we're asking, asking community partners to come in and help us, look at that data and see what the needs are in the community and what we want to do about it. There's four other assessments that we do look at. We look at community things, strengths. So in Defiance County, what are some themes that we see across the board? What are some strengths of our county? We look at forces of change. So what are some things that may be changing in the next three years that might affect what we're trying to do? The last time, we were kind of in the middle of presidential elections and stuff like that, so that was something that might affect what we're trying to get done. We also do a local public health systems assessment. So public health is not just us at the Health Department, but it's all of us working together because we all work together to protect the public and protect the health of the public. So we look at how we're doing as a whole collectively to protect the public health. And the last thing we do is a quality of life survey. So we ask residents what they're feeling about their quality of life in Defiance County. So we take all of that information, we synthesize it, we bring it together, and we decide what we're going to do, what health issues we want to look at, and what populations, groups we might need to target. So for example, one of the areas we've seen was falls, then, and specifically to senior falls, that that was an issue within Defiance County that we felt we needed to address. So that was something within injury prevention that we're looking at and we're doing some programming for. So the 2009 Community Health Improvement Plan will come after the health assessment. So once we get the data back in August, we'll go ahead and start meeting. It's the rubber meets the road. That will start happening in about a year from now, September to October, with the idea to have the plan in place January of 2019. The last few slides, I know you can't really see them, they're black and white, but those are some of the programs that we have in place right now from this health improvement plan that we did the last time. The first slide, picture on the first slide is a child in a car seat. So one of the injury prevention programs that we're doing is child passenger safety, so making sure that children are buckled into properly and safely every time. The second one is cribs at the Health Department to address SIDS and to address safe sleep. If a child doesn't have a safe sleep environment, a baby, we are able to give a pack-and-play to have them sleep in so that they have something that is a safe sleep environment. The third picture there is something that we just held, we're doing a matter-of-balance training throughout the county. What that is, is for residents 65 and older who have previously fallen. One of the biggest indicator of subsequent falls after that is their fear of falling because they've had it happen to them once, and they're afraid it's going to happen again. So this whole curriculum looks at trying to reduce that fear of falling, getting some exercise to help, and hopefully decrease their fear of falling. The next one, the next slide has two pictures related to our drug-free coalition and our safe communities, both geared around Drive Sober Campaign, which we did at the fair, and then that picture of them in the football stance is our Drug Free Leadership Council. That's something where we have two representatives from each high school in the county, and they look at that social norming. So they say what they're doing is, a lot of the public think, just like you, that the amount of students who are doing marijuana is 60% or 70%, when it's really 9%. So what the social norming is, is that majority of students are not doing drugs, and so let's be the majority. If they feel like the majority aren't, then they're more likely not to do it. And then the last slide is a resource pamphlet that we got to all of the providers within Defiance County regarding resources for nutrition and physical activity, just trying to help with the obesity indicator. So with that, I will entertain any questions, if you have any regarding our health assessment and our health improvement plan. It's really good data for not only us and for other agencies, but also for you guys, if you're looking at some sort of policy change, or you're looking at stuff within the city to do something different, you can use that data to look at, you know, some indicators. Also, if you ever need our help to, you know, give you some supporting data, or to help if you want to apply for grants, whether it be for, you know, I don't know, sidewalks or safety, or complete streets, or something that would affect the health of the public, it's definitely something that we're interested, invested in, and want to help any way we can.
Any questions? Thank you so much for coming to Hicksville and letting us know what you're busy doing.
Absolutely.
The one with all the tabs?
If you guys want to keep those, you're welcome to. I don't know if you have a news for them or not.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks for having us.
Maybe if they look at them more closely at a later date, they might have more questions for you.
Absolutely.
Do you have a business card or contact?
No, I don't. I will get Diane some. We, like I said, just being appointed in May, and we went through an email change, I haven't gotten them yet, but that's on our list of things to do, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we will go on to boards and commissions. And I believe Cheryl said that there was something on the table tonight from the Planning Hicksville Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on an application for a lot split on Thursday, September 24, 2017, starting at 5:00 in the office of the Zoning Inspector located at 108 North Main Street, Hicksville. The application submitted by Lester Lanariotter is a request to split lots 13 and Lot 14, Edgerton Outlots, with a physical address between the corner of Chicago Avenue and 617 Spencerville Street. The request is to split .506 acres from Lot 13, and .506 acres from Lot 13 and Lot 14 part, and .315 from lots 13 or 14, more or less. So that's going to be September 21. If anybody has an interest in that, we encourage you to come.
Does anybody have any idea what the plans are?
Are you sure at least one house is going to go on one of the wrecked homes? I think the one on this end that homeowner is interested in buying, but you'd have to talk to Mike for all.
Are there any other commissions? That, boards, commissions? All right, we'll go on then to committees of council. Are there any reports from any committees of council? All right. Looking to see if there's any minutes in the packets, I don't see any, so. All righty. We'll go on to the administrator's report.
The only thing is just reminding people next week is the general pickup.
General pickup next week on their normal days.
Should be.
I have, a lot of people ask me about Bryan Street, when are they going to, because they've cut it out a lot, formed across the intersections, they are...
I know, they're still hoping by the end of September to have everything ramped up. So I can't see all their UMPs in September 19th or anything like that.
Okay. I'm going to go backwards a minute because I see this is in the packet about the CRA meeting we met, and we kind of came about with the guidelines that the group wanted to use, and it's all in the minutes, 75%, seven years, with a minimum investment of $10,000. So, and it's for residential and commercial. Troy's going to start some paperwork, but...
I have it almost done. It'll probably be done in a few days, actually.
The school, this needs to go before the school first, so there's nothing to do tonight, except once you get the information or review from Troy, then you'll have a little more information. So we'll go on, and Kent, that's all you want to let us know is that next week is the general pickup? Any guidelines that you want to remind folks about? Don't bring your stuff in from out of town.
Pretty much.
People are going to set up stuff we don't pick up like ours. Spills it right out in the Tribune and on the flyers we put out.
Okay. And just for all of you to know, I did advertise for Kent's position through September 20th, so then we'll have the Personnel Committee do some interviewing, so.
Hopefully the week of the 25th, please.
Yeah, we'll do it right away.
Sorry, but I think she meant next year.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be that nice.
Solicitors' report.
First thing I have is a final reading, a third reading by caption only, Ordnance 2017-15, an ordinance increasing the wages for the fire chief position with the Village of Hicksville.
So you need a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Baker? Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And it's Ordnance 2017-16, a second reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend... And it's ordinance 2017-16, a second reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the charge for sidewalk permits. Then resolution 2017-18 by caption only, a third reading, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2018.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
It's a third reading by caption only, resolution 2017-21, a resolution to assess streetlight mileage.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
And resolution 2017-23, third reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
I assume. Didn't we already do this?
We do it every year, but we haven't done it yet this year.
Oh, I thought we did it this year.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please. Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Then the other thing that I have, and Kent has it here and may need some clarification from the police chief, prior to the last meeting, we, some of us attended a presentation that the 911 center put on regarding software that the county's implementing in the sheriff's department and the city of defiance is implementing in the 911 center to do with the access to their records and the ability to mobilely access the records in the cars and other The police chief did forward me a copy of a contract and I understood there were, the main part of it was the same, but there were some numbers that were still being tweaked at that time. And Kent has a version here and I think we need to confirm that it's the final version. Because of the amount that it is, it doesn't require, it's way under the threshold that Kent can go ahead and sign the contract, but I think for everybody's sake, would like everybody's blessing before we go ahead and do that. The one question that I had for the police chief, my recollection from when we were in the meeting was that the initial amount down, the 911 center was paying basically to get things moving so that other people could budget for it coming next year. And I see in the contract, it's got three dates basically, upon execution, we'd owe 50%. And then upon delivery of management documents, another 30. And then when it went live, another 20%, which doesn't seem on its face to reflect that basically the county was, I mean, we still would owe the same amount, the way I understood it was, they, because their amount is substantially more than what the 911 center, they basically were going to fund the 50% required down payment for the total project out of their money. And then that way, the villages and the county and the city that everybody involved could budget theirs in for 2018 to pay.
They have grant money that they have to use for something like this anyway.
Right.
They were going to pay the initial deposit, the 50% down. Our amount does not change, it's the $14,000.
Right, and I guess the question that I had is that our...
It's in talking with them, it's 14,000.
Oh, so we do need, does this, the amounts on here total, just looking at it blankly, like Kent says, less than 18 but over 17?
Well, the initial, there's a figure in there of 14,000 on that.
Yeah, so those exhibits need to be changed. But the question that I had is, because like I said, from a budgeting standpoint and a planning is, they have these days in here that those things are due from the village. And I guess I would want some clarification, you know, that, for instance, what the 50% that's due on contract execution, they're getting their 50%. Because we're trying to do, even though we're signing separate contracts, they're doing it as a group thing amongst the county, the 911, the city of defiance. Every entity owes a little bit different amount depending on what they're doing and their size. So, I mean, that's something I think if council's, God's blessing, Kent can sign at any time, but we need to have the right final figure in there and we need some clarification. We don't have to come up with the 50% as soon as we sign it.
Right, yeah, that was my understanding. The 911 center is going to pay you the 50%.
For everybody.
Yes. And then the rest of it actually is going to come due, it'll be next year, later in the year.
Right, so that we can budget and plan for it. So that, I mean, from my viewpoint, I've reviewed the contract, the substance of the contract is all fine. It's a matter of tying it down and getting the actual exhibit that has the actual price on it so that we got the right one. And I'd like something modified from their standard deal that basically acknowledges that the county's paying, you know, the 50% that, you know, we'll still owe our percentage whenever, on the amount, whenever those next dates come true, but the first 50%, as far as what they require to get started, they're going to count whatever the county's putting down towards theirs as 50% of the total project.
Something you're writing from the...
I need, I just need these exhibits changed, basically. I don't want, I don't want us deciding something saying we're paying 50% on execution when we're not paying 50% on execution. We're more like probably, the way we should probably do it is, we're paying 50% on the second date and 50% on the third date or something of what we owe, but the county's paying enough that they'll go ahead and get started on the project. And that's the way that it should be worded, is we shouldn't have anything that's due upon execution, in other words. So with those, and I don't know if anybody's got any questions or comments the chief could ask or answer or anything like that, but...
Does that price on there include making all of the cars mobile?
It does.
Is that something we've got to budget also?
It covers the software cost of putting mobiles in. It does not include the computers.
The computers, right. Because I think we need to do both of them. I don't think it makes sense to do one and not the other.
If we're going to be, if I'm allowed to do this, we'll go ahead and get the quotes and prices and mockups on everything for the computers. But without going ahead, we'd kind of, let's go ahead and write the computer side of it down.
Okay.
So what do you need, Troy?
I'd probably just, I mean, I guess Kent could do it, you know, under the statutory authority, but I do want a blessing from everybody to go ahead and do it, make a motion.
Make a motion regarding...
Go ahead and enter in the contract.
Will that Bonner, I think it's Bonner, that guy that keeps bugging us? Will he have to resend? I mean, I'll sign, I just don't want to sign blind.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going to be up to him to send that revision.
I don't even know if we should vote on it until we get a right, yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Well, and I guess what we're saying, though, is Kent could sign it without anybody voting on it here anyway. It's more a blessing that you guys want to go ahead and do with it. And you could, you could say, as long as we get the numbers tied down and they're less than, at least they're presented, is the same amount, which I'm doing the math in my head, like I said, is less than 18,000 but more than 17. That might be just about 18.
It should be.
Yeah.
The one that you have should say 14.
Yeah.
You better wait till you get the right number.
Yes.
Well, we're going to wait, but I guess Kent, we don't want to have to wait two weeks to come back from council or have a special meeting on something that you can do.
You want to vote for when the correct numbers are here, Kent can go ahead and sign.
Right.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Police chief, if you have a report?
Okay, thank you very much, Harry, for approving that. Let's see, we did participate in the Drive Sober Get Pulled Over campaign that just ended yesterday. I don't have statistics on it yet because we haven't compiled them since it just ended yesterday, like I said. We have advertised for full and part-time positions with the police department. That'll be, that'll be running for the next couple of weeks. The sheriff's office is also in the process of hiring, so there's a lot of competition out there right now for getting good police officers or deputies. The only other thing I have, and I don't know if I'm supposed to bring it up or not, is my probation should be up as far as the six month goes. I don't know how...
We're going to talk about it later tonight.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I have.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Are we enforcing the three-hour...
Yes, we are.
Because I, we haven't done that in a long time. I got a text over the week.
The last time, okay, the last time that I went around, actually, was when Monty was here and he told me about it. And then there have been, so there have been some comments about problems with parking and doing things downtown. So last week, I did start going around and doing some of that, yes.
And is that going to be on, because we haven't done it in a while. That's why, for the public...
The signage is up there.
I know, I know.
Something we need to enforce, just like everything else.
And I think the public needs to know that, you know, if they are going to bark and we are going to enforce it and check on it.
There's been one, I did it three days in a row, there was three, four days, one person each day. And those people, the first day I gave them four hours, the second day it was about three and a half, and the third day was about three and a half.
I just hadn't received a text on that and I said I will...
I had someone come to my house.
Whoops.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll go on to the fire chief.
I have nothing on fire. Other than thank you for passing the ordinance.
Yeah.
But he wasn't able to make the name, he didn't have any for EMS.
Okay. And we don't have a park director here. Guess that's about all the chiefs we have. We'll go on to the fiscal officers' report then.
You have the usual cash statement, the August income tax report, which the numbers are not very pretty. And you also have the new community link report. Like this report, otherwise they'll try to make it something else. This does the water, the sewer, and the trash separate, so it's kind of long, but...
Did you all see our new water bills this month? I'm not privy to our mail, so I didn't. I saw them in the office, but... That's all I have. All right. No questions about any of that stuff? Hopefully that income tax balance will go up here at the end of the year. Well, I guess we can continue on to the mayor's report. Ira spoke about the CRA. So I guess that leaves the EMS district meeting minutes. And we met at the Sherwood library and, and we, as you read in the minutes, discussed it some more between Delaware, Sherwood, Hicksville, and the, some of the involved townships. Everybody was real good in contributing to the conversation and everybody was really nice. You know, we talked about in the ideal situation where the EMSs would be centered, since Hicksville, Sherwood, and Delaware all have two each. And they had concerns about the expense of relocating their places where their squads sit. And the township said they already paid the towns to provide that service, so they weren't worried about it and they didn't want to provide any more money. So they were all very appreciative of the dialogue that was held and the conversation and the fact that, you know, it may be needed in the future, but it's not going anywhere. So I have to say that I'm relieved that the whole topic has been had and over with because that's one of the things I wanted to try for a long time, so.
So everybody was receptive except the finance part. Everybody.
Well, I can't speak for them.
But they showed up.
I mean, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they don't have issues with personnel?
Well, you know, as I said, the townships don't have to worry about it because Sherwood and Delaware and Hicksville provide the service. And the EMTs were asked at each place if they were interested and they, it sounds like they wouldn't commit without having more details of how it would go. And I guess Sherwood Mayor Mallett didn't say anything while I was sitting there until I realized after I left that he didn't say anything about it, but he originally told me Sherwood was, really wanted to participate.
But at least you tried.
Yeah. You know, it was, they were, like I said, they were appreciative of sitting down together and talking about it, but no one was really ready to ask their residents to pass a levy to provide more money for their EMS services. So I asked Cody to, you know, you had talked about...
First responders.
First responders. And I asked Cody if he would find an instructor that would come to Hicksville to train first responders and what he needed for a minimum class. And so we're just putting the idea out there of what we can do and how we can not overburden what volunteers we have left. I spoke with all of them at a meeting last week, all that showed up, and we talked about, you know, they asked people they ran into at the fair and, you know, they're reaching out to people and, you know, that's all I can ask. And I will continue to reach out to people. And all of you, I'm sure, can reach out to people. So anyway.
What do we currently have on staff?
Three full-time EMTs.
And then three volunteers?
Yeah. So that's the way that went. So I've asked, I've been asked to set up a trick-or-treating date. So looking ahead to the calendar, I saw that the 28th, October 28th was on a Saturday. And if you guys are all right with that date, we'll just say 5 to 7. If you want to make it earlier, we could. Did somebody say something over there?
Say it, Kent.
Spoken like that 4 to 6, but that's...
Spoken like a grandfather that might be taking some kids around.
I don't know of any reason why we couldn't have a 4 to 6.
But I don't care, we'll be out regardless.
I guess the fire chief, is the, is fire department going to have their carnival this year, chief?
Yes, we are.
And what time does this start?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know how that affects you guys.
I think, I don't have a time down yet. I think it's usually around 5 or 6.
One thing I could tell you is that it is dark, relatively dark by 6:30 anymore. When we were little kids, we trick-or-treated in the dark, but I suppose for child safety and everything, maybe we should do as Kent said and go 4 to 6.
Well, I'm in favor of 4 to 6.
4 to 6. Since it's already...
So that's October 28th, 4 to 6.
Kent's party camp ruined Halloween.
Everybody's going to be so used to 5 to 7.
4 to 6, you can pass anybody.
I think we bounce it around, depending if there's a Halloween, a Rotary Parade.
Make sure you get a good headline in the paper on that.
That's a very important detail. All right, um, let's see if I had, seems like I had a note about something else. That's all I see in my notes.
I'd like to go on executive session.
Before that, I have a quick question. Oktoberfest, I know people have seen some of that stuff on Facebook. Summerfest didn't happen this year, they're trying to do a Oktoberfest, the Chamber of Commerce downtown. I think Kent had worked, is what? Oh.
Not in time?
It's in October, they're trying to do something a little bit different, more fall-ish kind of activities, but I think they were talking to Kent about closing off the downtown like they do with Summerfest. I believe it's October 14th, it's in the afternoon, from like 3 to 6, not real late in the evening, the Huber, I think they're asking for the different businesses and organizations to help sponsor. But I know they had a question about the adult beverage area, and I think Two Bandits is handling that with the band and everything. And if they extended a roped-off area in the downtown area by Two Bandits. And I said, I don't know if there was any legal ramifications or...
Well, they'd have to get the proper permit. And it'd be something separate from their regular permit, they'd have to get one of those one day, like the same thing they had to do in order to serve it over there by the Huber.
Right.
Get one of those permits like that, and then that would specify where, you know, it had to be in a set location with the...
They'd have to do the same thing to do it, because before it was on village property. Well, it still is kind of in a way, but it's on the sidewalk into the street. I believe the band and everything is going to be more on this end of town instead of that direction, but doing like a hayride. I think they have a meeting coming up here and doing more planning for it, but a lot of activities, kid games, and I think the auxiliary, fireman's auxiliary is open, a breakfast in the morning, so, like I said, bring people to downtown.
Yeah. People have to put that date on their calendar.
Right. So, but there'll be some more information coming out of that.
Now, I hate to, before, did you have some?
If they do meet, let me know, because I still got to pin down some stuff.
I'll be out of town.
Nobody really knows who's in charge yet.
I know.
If you find out they're meeting, let me know.
I think it's a chamber meeting coming up and then I know, like Jody Bland and Karen Smith and Lynn Howser.
Last week.
Yeah, I think they're the kind of three heading it up, so.
Well, this is a, this is going backwards somewhat, but, and Kent, I didn't check my emails this afternoon, you may have replied. Did you get any quotes for the north, the South Main Street, Edgerton to High, I mean, any, maybe I should just say paving quotes for either street, any street?
I have heard nothing.
council wanted South Main Street completely paved, but I wasn't sure that was accurate. So I thought we could, you know, I mean, and I told you that I think I'm okay with just patching it, you said that there might, there might not be a great deal of difference between...
Oh, yeah.
And you, you were waiting for quotes, last I knew, but there's, you know, can we just, for having a general idea of telling Kent, is patching South Main Street okay with you and waiting till, how long would it be before you would pave it, anyway?
Me? Never.
How long before you think the village would need to pave it? In a regular schedule?
We passed 49 South.
Yeah, that's because new ODOT was coming in next year.
Because monies are coming in in 18.
If it was sticking around, I'd probably be looking at no later than 2019.
Okay, so it would be patched for...
Depends on what your money situation is, too.
Well, that's, that concerns me, too, and if we did that paving, now would it be part of our grant money? I mean, would it be, would we, it's all out of our pocket? Not any grants or loans or all out of our pocket, okay, because I'm not sure that...
The last I heard, and this didn't come from EMHT, they thought with basically rebuilding South Bryan and Beach, we'd just about be tapping out all the contingency money.
Okay.
So if we would go ahead and fully rebuild South Main, pave it and all that stuff...
Wait, you mean South Bryan?
No, I'm, yeah, rebuild South Bryan, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we just leave South Main the way the plans call for patching, really won't change anything if you decide you wanna go ahead and do the extra, then it's all right.
Yeah, we've gotta rebuild South Bryan, but I'm not sure we could afford to pave South Main at this time, that's my concern, but you'll know better when you start working on the budget for next year or teaching someone else how to do the budget, but...
I've got mine about done.
I figured you did.
But South Main is already patched from the water line. South Main is rougher than a cob before they put the storm sewer through it.
Right.
And South Main, I'd rather chip seal Bryan and pave Main. Main Street has got a tremendous amount of traffic on it. Tremendous.
It does.
That's why I brought the subject up, so I have an idea of how council feels about it.
If I ever see some costs, I can run them past people so they can see what it is.
It comes down to affordability, too, if you've got monies.
All righty.
But do something cheaper on, on the side streets as opposed to skimping on a main drag. Hence the name Main Street.
Is there any, can someone answer, like, what cost differences between paving a block and chipping sealing a block?
I mean, I hate chip seal, I think most drippers do, too. Yep, but it's...
Does it last longer, which...
No. They do it to a state highway.
They just did it to 37.
Oh.
You see enough thickened windshield sales when they do chipping.
Yes. Well, anyway.
One of the turnuses.
So, okay, that's fine, everyone's aware that it's on my mind if no one else is.
I'd like to go in executive session for personnel.
Second.
Can you add, we need acquisition on that as well?
Oh, lay an acquisition on that?
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.